Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Public hearing for the adoption of the 2020 general fund budget. Is there anyone to speak on behalf of that? I've got to say this three times. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the adoption of the 2020 general fund budget?
Danielle, say something.
Last time, public hearing adoption of the 2020 general fund budget. It's closed. Okay, I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McCall.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitath.
Here.
Chairman Bohm.
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to add community mental health agreement for recovery to A.C., delete MMR/MA renewal, to add Michigan Indigent Defense Grant Agreement, Public Defense Office to A.E., to add the morgue renovations and improvement to A.F.
A.D. Yeah, A.D.
A.D., yes, I'm sorry, A.D., yes.
Okay.
Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Item five, meetings of previous minutes.
I would move to approve and file the minutes of the 10/17/19 Commission meeting and November 7, 2019 Standing Committee meetings.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. No proclamations, consent agendas, items A through F.
At this time, I would move to approve items A through F on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Reports of standing, special committees. Mr. Greitath.
Just two real quick things. One, just for the general public, we had a meeting with the library tonight with their board and our board on some issues that they are facing. I thought it went very well. Everybody had some input, everybody had some ideas, and I think that we made the inroads that we needed to make at a first icebreaker meeting. So I was very pleased with that, and we'll move forward from that. The second thing I would like to report on is we had a GIS meeting today downstairs in the Dodge Auditorium. It was a three-hour meeting, I was not looking forward to it, and when it was over with, I couldn't believe that it was already done. It was an excellent presentation, state of Michigan, am I... Help me out here. Am I live? Not live. Anyway, they came in, they have a group of about 300 people that work for the state of Michigan, and they build this network out there, and they do the flyovers, they handle everything, and what they're giving us in exchange for three things. We have to give them some addresses, we have to give them some road centers, and we have to give them some parcels. By giving them those three things, they in turn give us 12-inch video, or not video, but 12-inch, what's the term I'm looking for?
Imagery?
Imagery of the entire county, and we get that at no cost by trading off in that way. Now, they've come up with two others, they come up with a 6-inch and they come up with a 3-inch, and the smaller that number gets, the tighter the image gets, and the better it is. Fort Gresham, for example, has opted to go to some 3-inch in some places, Marysville has done some 3-inch in some places, and some other communities have gone to 6-inch in some places. So they did a comparison, they looked at 12-inch, they put a 6-inch resolution next to it, and then a 3-inch, and it is unbelievable the difference that you will see there. You can count ceiling tile, or roof tiles, on a building with 3-inch resolution. It's unbelievable. But 6-inch and 3-inch cost more money. So Justin was going to do a survey, he's going to try to reach out to all of the communities and see who wanted to do what. If you want to go to 6-inch here in St. Clair County at about 83 or 85 bucks a square mile, I think it was, the cost came up to about $670,000, somewhere in that range. You could go from 12-inch to 6-inch. It's going to cost you, again, to go down to 3-inch. But for the time being, we're working with the 12 local communities because they're doing a lot smaller. Take the city of Algonquin, if they want to do one square mile and go to 3-inch, it wouldn't cost them hardly anything. So it's a great plan, it's coming together more and more and more, they're getting more technology going. So we did that presentation, then there was a company that comes in and does this sort of stuff, they have like 26 airplanes, they fly, and all these $500,000 cameras did a great job of showing that and demonstrating that, and then our own Trevor got up there and talked about what he has done. He did an excellent job of presenting. A lot of people stayed behind to ask a lot of questions. It was very well done, the state of Michigan thanked us. They've done some regional things, and we have more people at our meeting downstairs today than what they get at a regional meeting in many places. He was very pleased with, he did a good job. So, sorry to go on for so long, but it was a pretty exciting thing, and I know Jeff, you'd have probably, being the computer geek you are, you would have just loved...
Oh, yeah, man.
Sorry.
David?
Just two things really quick, I won't take that much time. Cape Pack Road out in Berlin Township, they did a fantastic job, it's back up and running, and the road looked, I mean, they did a very good job, Road Commission. I also want to thank Sandra Gilby and also Kurt Weston, they addressed a letter for a vet that lives in Columbus Township, sent him a very nice letter in regards to the flooding, and they sent the road foreman out there to talk with them to address a flooding issue.
Do.
No, sir.
Greg?
Yes.
Georgia?
The only thing I want to bring up on December 5 at 9:30 here, I think probably in the Don Dodge Auditorium, SOMCOG will be here, they're traveling around and they're doing economic development input sessions, so anyone who would like to attend that, you know, there's a lot of economic talk in all of the different groups that happen throughout the county, so I think this would be a really great, great time and place to share the knowledge here and really show SOMCOG that St. Clair County's...
I shipped that out to EDA along with Chamber of Commerce and all that, probably wouldn't be a bad idea. You still have that invite, Carrie, you know?
Yep, we have posted it on the county's social media, and it was talked about at Blue Meets Green as well.
Okay, to push it, okay, good. Because we were a little skinny on attendance, and I think it sounds like it's going pretty good now, okay. Took a little road trip today over to Stratford, Ontario with the bus, 22, 23 of us. I was over there about six weeks ago, Don Fletcher, myself, Dan Lockwood. As you know, the Tom and Kathy Vertan that owned the theaters down in Marine City are going to be launching a four-week or six-week festival, they're going to be using the Performing Arts Center at East China to do that. There was an economic impact study that was paid for and completed by the Tourism Bureau along with Tourism Bureau along with the Community Foundation, showing what those potential numbers could look like. Stratford, now granted, is one of the top three places on the planet that you can go see theater. Got a chance to get through there today with a joint mixture of St. Clair County, or Marine City, St. Clair people. I came out of there six weeks ago, and I said, "Man, we got to bring a group over there to see..." A lot of funders, potential funders for it, there's, you know, a lot of interest in doing it. It's another one of those, they get 500,000 visitors a year that come to Stratford. And my whole thing, can we be 5% of that? Can we be 10% of that? You know, it's 25,000, 50,000, it's my old lighthouse story, right? I've been up to Lighthouse once, I don't care to ever do it again, but 30,000 people a year come to our community to do it, right? Our Trails Initiative that we're working on, a whole lot of people come. I don't ride a bike, I don't care to ride a bike, but a lot of people come to do those things. So this festival, nothing. His bike is stationary. So, point being is just because, you know, when you look at economic development as a, you know, as a circle, those are those slivers that can bring, and this, the potential impact of the stage festival leaving on the 10-percenter thing is huge. And we talked today, so we've got a ton of wonderful things happening in this countywide, now we just need to sustain it too, right? We need that sustainability in that, and these are the types of events that you bring in that help, you know, that feeds everything, and then it helps with the sustainability of the entire thing. So they're going to be launching this summer, sounds like they got three-year commitments from the necessary funders to work on this thing and to continue to grow it, and I mean, the Vertans right now, they have 18,000 paid seats just in what they're doing down there. It's been a huge success, and now they're trying to help grow that, and that was one of the Blue Meets Green initiatives a few years back.
Just 18,000?
18,000 ticketed things, not different individual ticketed, it's on the Stratford thing is different, you know, participants. It's there again, you know, you look at the best, right, which that place is the best, and you would ask simple questions like, "Why can't you do it at McMorn? Why can't you do it here? Why can't you do it there?" Well, the one theater that we went into, getting a better understanding of theater, didn't know anything about it before, the closest seat, or the furthest you're away from the stage is 60 foot. You go up, you look up, there's 600 lights in the ceiling, you know, which a lot of these other venues are more concert-style types of venues, they don't have the lighting and the effects and orchestra pits in the back. I mean, you just, I mean, when you go there and you actually see this, you understand why McMorn doesn't work for something like that, why, you know, whatever here, you know, doesn't work for that kind of stuff. So a lot of good potential. One of the festivals that they had used as comparable has 13 different locations throughout the county. I know there's been some conversations before about that, you have your performing arts centers in your Marysville, you have them in Port Huron, you know, essentially trying to work this thing into a bigger festival. So, more to be determined. Enough of listening to me. So, any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Unfinished business, non-new business, item A.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the county disbursement for October 2019 in the amount of $46,993,159.04.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item B, the Policy 137 Change Order Review Committee revisions.
This time, I make a motion to approve the amendments to Policy 137 Change Order Review Committee.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C, Resolution 1916 for the 2019...
This time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 19-16, approving the county at-large drain assessments for 2019 in the amount of $576,310.71.
Support.
Discussion.
Real quick question, Carrie or Danielle, what is their budget for this coming year? I've got these two numbers here, the 695 and the 576.
Just over the 500,000? Seven hundred thousand.
Okay, all right, that's good, thank you.
Kind of interesting story on this, and I'll try to make this quick. Previous Drain Commissioner, when I sat on the board, our county at large was anywhere from 100 to 150,000, right? And then we got a new Drain Commissioner, and I remember he submitted a budget for 300,000, Howard and Wally at the time, and I, we (laugh) so we went over, didn't understand what the county at large meant, you know, you pay for a portion to help clean drains, and one of the things arguably at the time, that's, you know, they weren't getting things done, right? So we went over, we listened to the Drain Commissioner, he explained everything, and we said, "We're giving you 400,000 to get on these drains," you know, because we, it was just, we were not getting them done. To the point that it's weird, because if you're too aggressive, sometimes the townships, Georgia, you know this, you can't make the match in Dave, you know? I mean, you guys, you just, I mean, you could go and clean drains, and you got to the point where it was almost a little too aggressive, and the townships were calling, you know, especially the smaller ones, saying, "Hey, we can't, we can't afford this," you know?
What happened in Casco Township, and this was, I don't know, four years ago approximately, and Bob Wiley actually had the figure cut in half, and it was actually $160,000 just for this one drain that township would have to absorb, and he reported that it'd be only 80,000. So of course, I went to the Casco meeting, sat with Bob, and the supervisor at the time, she definitely had the figures correct, and Bob Wiley corrected it, but they still went ahead with the drain, and he worked very well with township, which he does, and they came up with a timeframe to come up with the 160,000 dollars, so it wasn't a one-year cost, so Bob Wiley works very well with townships.
Okay, enough of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D, Resolution 1917.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-17, establishing per diems for board and commissioners.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E, Resolution 1918.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the waiving of investment interest earned.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item F, Resolution 1919.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt Resolutions 19-19, adopting the 80/20 cost-sharing model.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item G, Resolution 1923, budget adoption for 2020.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1923, adopting the St. Clair County 2020 General Appropriations Resolution.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. Kudos to you and Danielle. I have not got one phone call in like four years, and I used to get four a day, so you're doing something right. Did we get a roll call there, Bohm? Yeah, roll call.
Definitely should.
Yes. Got it. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item H, Resolution 19-25.
I would move to adopt Resolution 19-25, ratifying the annual wage adjustments for the St. Clair County Sheriff's Command, COEM.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item I, Resolution 19-26.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to adopt Resolution 19-26, ratifying annual wage adjustments for the St. Clair County Circuit Court Family Supervisors and Probate Employees.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item J, Resolution 19-28.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution 19-28, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the St. Clair County District Court Employees, AFSMI 1518.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item K, Resolution 19-29.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-29, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the St. Clair County Communications Officers.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item K, Resolution 19-29.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-29, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the St. Clair County Communications Officers.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L, Resolution 19-30.
This time, I move to adopt Resolution 19-30, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Front of the Court Employees, TPOAM.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L, Resolution 19-30.
This time, I move to adopt Resolution 19-30, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Front of the Court Employees, TPOAM.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L, Resolution 19-30.
This time, I move to adopt Resolution 19-30, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Front of the Court Employees, TPOAM.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item M, Contract Approval Request.
I would move to approve the agreement with Cummins for the Generator Service and Load Bank Testing for the Intervention Center for a term of 1/1, 2020 through 12/31/25 in the amount of $23,361.84.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item N, the 2020 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fiscal year 2020 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Award and Revised Budget in the amount of $315,861.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item O, the 2000 Alcohol Traffic Safety.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the fiscal year 2020 alcohol traffic safety and drunk driving prevention initiative, incentive grant agreement in the amount of $49,000.
Support.
There's no matching funds or anything, right? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. The P, the Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
This time, I move to approve the 2019 Hazard Mitigation Grant Application in the amount of $30,457.33.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item P, oh, Billy, hold on.
Q.
Q, yes. Landfill Cone Penetration Testing.
Yes, at this time, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to award the contract for cone penetration testing at the landfill to GeoTechnology Incorporated in amount not to exceed $32,440.04.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item X, the Contract Approval Request for Cisco Phone Replacement.
This time, I move to approve the Installment Purchase Agreement with Key Government Finance Incorporated for the purchase of a phone system in the amount of $519,803.80 for a term of 11/22/19 through 11/21/24.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item Y, Contract Renewal Request for the Probate Court Agreement.
I would move to approve the agreement with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for the Public Guardian in the amount of $69,850 for a term of 10/1/19 through 9/30/20.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item S, the Landfill Material Supply Request.
Make a motion to award the landfill material supply agreements, each for a term of 12/1/19 through 11/30/20 as follows, Danny's Transport in an amount not to exceed $124,950, Asphalt Trucks Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $324,750, Pearson Pit Trucking in an amount not to exceed $145,000, and S.A. Torrello in an amount not to exceed $180,000.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item U, T was canceled. Item U, the Survey and Remonumentation 2020.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the 2020 Survey and Remonumentation Grant Agreement in the amount of $84,889.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item V, Blue Cross/Blue Shield Annual Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Blue Cross/Blue Shield 2020 Renewal Documents as presented.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item W, the Contract Approval Request for AT&amp;T Internet Services.
I would move to approve the Internet Service Agreement with AT&amp;T for a term of three years in a total amount of $104,115.60.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item W, the Contract Approval Request for AT&amp;T Internet Services.
I would move to approve the Internet Service Agreement with AT&amp;T for a term of three years in a total amount of $104,115.60.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item X, the Contract Approval Request for Cisco Phone Replacement.
This time I move to approve the Installment Purchase Agreement with Key Government Finance Incorporated for the purchase of a phone system in the amount of $519,803.80 for a term of 11-22-19 through 11-21-24.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item Y, Contract Renewal Request for the Probate Court Agreement.
I would move to approve the agreement with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for the Public Guardian in the amount of $69,850 for a term of 10-1-19 through 9-30-20.
Support?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
The Delta Dental Contract Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the Delta Dental 2020 Renewal Documents.
Support?
Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
The Health Department Manning Table.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the revision of a Clerk II position from part-time to full-time and to add a public health technician to the Health Department Manning Table.
Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item A B, the Community Mental Health Board Appointment.
This time I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kyle Sheweck to the Community Mental Health Board Member-at-Large for the remainder of a three-year term expiring 3/31 of 20.
Support?
Thank you.
You actually know him, Greg?
Good, pretty impressive young man.
Yeah.
I tell you what, if you get a chance to ever talk to him, you won't regret it, he's going to be an asset.
Good. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? AC, Contract Request Approval for the St. Clair Mental Health Authority.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the agreement with the St. Clair County Community Mental Health Authority for counseling and treatment services for Recovery Court Participants for a term of 10-1-19 through 9-30-20 in the amount of $20,744.54.
Support?
The number right away is correct. Put down the recovery card, $20,000 is, see I made this call, it should be $52,000. For the recovery board? Oh, I'm sorry, that's a agreement with the queen, I'm sorry, I thought that was a code of error. I told you I would just do good looks.
Yeah, man, oh, man.
Out of order. Keep it straight.
From the cheap seat.
I think he brought his sister.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
AD, the Contract Approval for the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission.
I would move to approve the grant agreement with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commissions for the Public Defender's Office funding for a term of October 1st, 19 through September 30th, 20 in the amount of $1,689,116.57.
Support?
Discussion.
So this is a one-year grant?
So through the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, you do have to apply annually for your funding, this is a change for us to go to a public defender's office versus a contract attorney model, but this will put us in compliance with all eight of the MIDC standards, so we're pretty happy about that moving forward, but we do have to apply annually for this funding.
And haven't we been kind of told that this is, what percent, this is a full funding this year?
Well, so, the county has to maintain what's called our local share, so what we were paying on average, and I think the base years were 11, 12, and 13, or maybe 10, 11, and 12, I don't forget, or I forget which, but whatever we were paying in those years towards indigent defense net of the revenues we collect, we have to continue to maintain that amount, and that goes up annually, I believe it went up by 2% this year, but the rest of the portion to comply with those standards is paid by the state, and if the state does not pay it, then we're not required to comply with the standards.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the state came in and they changed the rate of reimbursements, it was gonna add another 400,000 or whatever to our bottom line, right, and stuff, so it was either one or the other?
So, one of the standards, standard eight does change the compensation structure for the attorneys, which would have doubled the rate that we pay now, so, and we have 31 attorneys on our list currently, so we are paying to train 31 attorneys, make sure that they are all in compliance with all the standards, however, they're not our employees, so it's very difficult to manage that process. With a public defender system, they are your employees, they're assigned a caseload, then you can just assign the work and make sure that it's done the way it needs to be done according to the statute.
Bill?
I just want to say thank you and kudos to Carrie and Danielle and Sandy for putting this together, it was a long struggle, they've been at it for a long time, and it wasn't easy to do, a lot of places, like I think Sandusky, I think they just doubled their fee, the attorneys that are court-appointed, instead of getting 60 bucks an hour, are getting 120, this group of hard-working people at the county took it upon themselves to actually go a little deeper and look and see if we put our own indigent defense fund together, I mean, our own public defender's office together, we can man an office, put some people to work, and handle our caseload, and do it for less money than if we were to pay the other people, so.
We looked at it years ago, and I don't think it was, it was a tit-for-tat kind of deal, wasn't it?
Yeah, if you were looking at the existing rate we were paying attorneys, it didn't make sense, but with the state imposing rates that we will have to pay, then it does make more sense to bring it in-house, and especially with the complications with the standards.
Good for you guys.
Wouldn't they go work on implementation on this, out of curiosity, is there a timeframe?
Well, after this is approved, I hope to get the, start posting the positions tomorrow or Monday, so we can start the hiring process.
Do they work for you, or do you hire somebody that oversees the office, and then they will be in charge of the hiring? Who does the?
So it is a department under administration, and so it'll be a new department under myself, so my plan is to hire the top person, the public defender, and then have them staff their office, or possibly have the number one and number two person selected, but the intent is to post all the positions near the same time, so when that top person is selected, then they'll already have a pool of candidates to look at, to fill the other positions.
Anybody they would tentatively hire, though, you would have a say in whether that person would be hired or not?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. What do we got there? Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner, what's your name?
Greitap.
Greitap.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
AE, the Medical Examiner Renovations and Improvements.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the morgue renovation improvement project in an amount not to exceed $1,260,545, and award the general contractor bid to Brinkell Contractors, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $769,000, and approve the issuance of a letter of intent for Brinkell pending and executed contract bonding and insurance requirements.
Support?
Thank you.
So this is a situation that we're getting booted out, essentially, right, and, well, we're not, we're kind of getting moved around and shuffled through, through the new renovations at McLaren Hospital, we have had our morgue there for a long time, we have looked at different options on stuff, you know, and so on and so forth, and truthfully, it made the most sense to stay right there, but we couldn't just stay where we were at right there, and when you look at these things, you know, I mean, it's a tough pill to swallow, you know, it's been 1.2 million, but on the same token, it's the most inexpensive option that we had by a bunch, so. Bill?
I would like to note that the bid came in about 300,000 below what was expected, and I'd like to get first in line for District 7 for that additional 300,000 that's left over.
How about the clerk's office?
So noted.
Any support?
Yeah, Brinkell, who's doing the work, I've done several jobs with them, they're a very good contractor, you'll have no worries, no complaints, they're very cooperative, and they want to do a nice job, so.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Very good. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitap?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Administrators' Report.
Still on the same token with the public defender's office, we are currently working with Kramer Real Estate to locate office space for the public defender's office, we are looking at something downtown and near the courthouse, so you probably will see a lease coming to you, a proposed lease, probably in January, we've looked at several options, working with Carissa to identify what we need, and we think we've found a suitable space that's near the courthouse, so more to come on that.
Carrie, how many, how many people?
There will be 18 employees in total, between the professional staff, clerical staff, and an investigator. Earlier this year, I did let the Board know that the DPW will no longer be operating our leachate pretreatment plant for us at the landfill at the, by the end of this year, they are agreeing to extend that until the end of January, RFPs are out right now for that service, and that will, a recommendation will come to you in January to take over those services. The employee that's currently doing it at the DPW is retiring, however, they're going to extend the retirement date till the end of January, but once he leaves, they don't feel they have anyone with the expertise to handle the specialized knowledge that it needs.
Carrie, does that tie into the Algonack Clay IRA plant also?
I don't believe so, this is specific to the leachate that is coming out of our landfill, we have our own pretreatment plant on site, you know, if the DPW is looking to do something different with this employee's retirement, that's not something I'm aware of or that we're necessarily involved in.
Is that Nick that's retired?
Yes.
He's the one that runs the plant in Algonack, too?
Yeah, okay, he's, and he's, has a lot of specialized knowledge to do the leachate pretreatment part of it, so I'm not sure how that will impact Algonack or not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We were notified that our paving vendor that did runway 422 at the airport is actually in our runway is getting an award from the Asphalt Pavement Association of Michigan, so Kathy will be going to East Lansing on December 12th to be there with the vendor to get that award, unfortunately, it's during our Board meeting, otherwise, we could attend as well.
Is that Ace Asphalt?
It was, yes, Ace Saginaw Paving, yep, they did a very nice job.
Very good company.
We are still continuing to work with the City of Port Huron and DTE on the easement that they need in our parking lot that is behind the old AT&amp;T building, right now, it's just kind of, the language is going back and forth with attorneys, you know, the city and the county were both in agreement, we're fine giving up that space to them, but they are hoping to have that done by the end of the year, so we do hope to have that agreement to you in December. I just wanted to give a quick update on animal control, I know you all saw the article of the 83 animals that were brought in, I've been out there several times, and the amount of public support and donations is really amazing, they have received just piles of donations in the garage, they have food, blankets, all the different things that they need to help take care of those animals, and they actually have been accepting applications and starting doing adoptions for the ones that we have, but kind of as part of that, it has been very labor-intensive for the staff, and it has put them behind on some of the licensing and processing of other paperwork, so they will be closed to the public on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the staff will still all be there working, taking care of the animals, but they were hoping if, without the walk-in traffic, that they'll be able to catch up on all those items. And one last thing, Danielle is working with our bond counsel on a potential refunding of our jailed debt, based on current market conditions, we could see an estimated savings of about $670,000 over the life of the bond, and that bond does mature in 2028, I don't know that anything will come before you in December, it would probably be in January, but we are looking at doing a refunding on that one.
When's, when's this building up?
2021 is, this building is done.
Sounded like a long time ago, 16 years.
I know, it did. It really did.
I think you're getting older, Jeff.
Yeah, I guess so.
And I did send earlier to you today, Lean Green Michigan, they are the company that does the PACE loans for many of the different things, they are having a gathering on December 11th, and they had indicated that they would like to provide recognition to the county for partnerships on all the different deals that we have done, so if anyone is interested in attending, please let me know, and I can forward that on to them.
I forwarded that email today, it's 5:00 to 7:00, I plan on attending, so if anybody has an interest in going down there, I know it's kind of.
Is that Detroit, isn't it?